We're on. Live streaming and recording.
All right.
Wrong.
All right, you want to start with the public hearings?
Start with public hearings. Shall I go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I'll ask that those that are participating, if you keep yourselves muted until your time is up, I appreciate it. Public hearing number one, Board of Trustees, after having a duly noticed public hearing and acknowledging their seat of all comments from the public hereby resolves and amends the following as indicated. One, Board of Trustees acknowledging receipt from the Village Planning Board of Planning Board Action Number Sixteen from the Planning Board meeting duly held on April twenty first and transmitted on April twenty second, which recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the requested zoning change. And two, further acknowledges receipt from the Courtland County Planning Department of Staff reports from the county in lieu of an official action by county planning as Courtland County Planning Board meetings have been canceled due to the COVID nineteen virus. And three, makes an official finding that the borough's zoning zoning changes in paragraph four are consistent with the recommendations in the comprehensive plan of the village. And four, abends the following tax parcels under Village Ordinance Section two-two-eight-five-two and New York State law as indicated on the village zoning map. Address sixty-six Southwest Street, tax back number seven-six dot two-four dash oh-one dash oh-two dot one-one. Prior zoning R two, amended zoning B two. Address thirty-six Southwest Street, apportion tax back number seven-six-two-four dash oh-one dash oh-two dot two-zero-zero. Prior zoning B two, B one, amended zoning B two. Ninety-nine Cuyahoga Street, tax back number seven-six-two-four dash oh-one dash one-nine dot zero-zero-zero. Prior zoning B one, amended zoning B two. Five directs to Village Clerk with the assistance of a civil engineer or other such qualified persons to make the above changes in section two to the village zoning map under Village Ordinance, section two-two-eight dash two, subparagraph two.
I'll make a motion that we accept it.
Well, we need to, uh, right, does anyone have anything to discuss on this? We're looking at the, uh, at the, um, YouTube feed too, to see if anybody posts anything there. I'm not seeing anything, so. Seeing no one. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept it as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll give that one to Tim. All right, any other discussion on this? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 unanimous. Okay. Next up, Dan.
Public hearing number two, further, monies from special reserves will be used thusly, fire department reserve for the private event air exhaust system at sixty thousand two hundred twenty dollars. Machiney reserve for DPW IT expenditures at five thousand dollars.
Discussion. Not seeing any, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Ed made it, Pat seconded. Close enough, either way. All right, any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Very good. Now we can begin the meeting proper. Okay, first up, to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Dan, do we need to approve each minutes separately, or can we approve the fourteenth, twenty-second, and twenty-eighth as one?
You can do as one.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of April fourteenth, April twenty-second, and April twenty-eighth as written.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think that there's anything else. Christian, I don't think that you have to hang out and watch this if you don't want to anymore.
Okay, that was one of my questions, so I'm good to go.
You're good to go.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the planning board, and I should be able to wrap everything up hopefully very soon and break ground here and open in the next forty-five, you know, sixty days.
Oh, that would be fantastic.
Well, thank you guys very much for your time and your willingness to listen to our project. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so minutes are approved, authorization of the payment of the bills, next.
I'll make a motion that we accept, that we authorize the payment.
I'll second.
Kevin second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, let's see, do we have? Okay.
Do we have the treasurer's report?
I don't see one, so. That's all right. We'll go right to cemetery.
I looked at it. I'll approve, I'll make a motion to accept as written.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Right.
All right, unanimous. Codes.
He's keeping busy.
Yeah.
I write it all. I'll make a motion to accept as written.
I'll second it.
Go ahead, Kevin, go ahead, Pat.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? unanimous.
Aye.
Okay, dog control.
Just a typo, it's thirty-two Warren Street, not Aaron Street, but other than that, I make a motion to accept it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Uh, let's see here. Streets and parks. Mike or Phil, you guys got anything you want to add? All right, you guys are doing a good job.
Yeah, not that I can think of.
Okay.
No, I'm all set unless you guys got questions for us.
No, I, I guess this is where I would throw in, uh, talking about making a motion to donate the dry well to Center for the Arts. Uh, they're looking to see if we would donate, we've got one. Uh, Mike Phil says we've, it's been kind of sitting around for a couple of years. Uh, they have need of it. Uh, they asked if we would be willing to donate it and, you know, I was talking to Ty today in our economic development meeting last night, the Center for the Arts is the economic driver of the village. It really is, and so we need to do what we can to keep them uh, in the boot and shoe business, so I would love to donate this, uh, to their, to, you know, to them for them to use.
When do they need it by?
Um, nowish. They're in the middle of working on it now, so I think they'd probably put it in, uh, you know, tomorrow or the next day.
Yeah, they're, they're definitely in a hurry, yeah.
Where are they gonna put it?
They said, oh, go ahead, Mike.
In their back driveway. Uh, it's before the sidewalk. They're kind of making a, a, a circle type drain in that back driveway.
So that should help prevent water from flowing over into the neighboring residences.
And, yep.
Correct, yep.
So, do I have a motion?
I think Kevin made the motion.
I doubt it. I'll make it.
Kevin made it, and Ed seconded it, because I could see him always throwing up his gang signs there. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. All right, good.
I want to thank the DPW for doing a great job on Saturday, and they were very cheerful and, uh, they tried to take my little lawnmower and everything, but I, I got the drive away with it, so it was all great.
You lucked out.
Yeah, they said it was pretty dull looking.
Yeah, you gotta put, you gotta put air in your tires.
You gotta wear your tires, that's for sure.
It's a nineteen seventy, I got it from my uncle who passed away.
All right, uh.
Before we move on, Mike, do we know when, does DDS have any paving schedule, so when people would know that uh, if they're doing concrete in the driveway, that they can have a vehicle out, or if they're doing paving? Do we, do we know when they're doing any of that?
They're doing some paving tomorrow. No, no, with the weather the way it's been and with the plant just opening up, no, they don't, but I can say something to them, see if we can get some kind of schedule, so.
Yeah, that would help let our residents know so that they can plan to either have a vehicle out or know what's, what's coming.
I get it, you're getting the phone calls just like I am, so.
Yeah, they, they parked quite a few, quite a bit of sidewalk today. Because I've been going over every morning and measuring them, everything's looking up the parts, six inches or better in the driveways. Between three quarter and five inches in the sidewalks and so.
Awesome.
Oh, they're doing good.
Thank you guys for checking up on that.
Yep.
Mike and Phil, I don't know if you were on earlier when I was talking about it, but, uh, they're doing great as far as that stuff's concerned, but, uh, when they're actually using their equipment in the roads, like to carry, uh, asphalt or whatever they're doing, or dirt, um, they really need to have somebody flagging traffic, because it happened to me two days ago, happened to my wife yesterday, but, uh, somebody's gonna end up getting hurt.
I, I heard, I heard you earlier, Tim, I'll say something to them again, I mentioned it the spring before they even started that they needed flagmen. But I will mention it again.
Thanks, thank you, appreciate it.
Tim? I did address that with Jordan the, um, Friday when you talked to me.
Yep.
It's been addressed, it's, so if that's an ongoing problem, I'll reach out to him again tomorrow. Um, because I told him if you're, if they're working in the road, or if they've got one lane blocked, they need a flagger.
Perfect, thank you, Bob.
Yep. All right.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, anything else for DPW?
I'd just like to, just like to remind our residents that if they're doing any work on trees between the sidewalk and the road, let our DPW guys know, those are village trees.
Very good.
Yeah.
I do have one more thing that kind of considers the DPW. Um, so we had an agreement with Little League, I believe we were gonna mow everything outside the infields or something like that, and they were gonna do all that. Well, Phil's been monitoring it, and, uh, he noticed it was a little high, so I reached out to them today. We're gonna give them a few days to get it mowed, if not, then Phil's gonna take the guys in there and do it and keep track of the time.
Right.
I don't get it, because they actually reached out to me to ask if they could go, still go in there and mow the infields, and they would have, you know, two guys, and I said yes.
So, the, the person I spoke to said that supposedly they did, but Phil's saying it's already pretty high, so I just gave him a nudge to say, look, you better, you better do it.
Yeah. Okay, um, and then, of course, the other thing we need to bring up, and we'll, we're gonna have to harp on this a lot, is that, uh, we're having loads of recycling rejected from the county now, because people are putting non-recyclables in their cans. Um, and that costs all of us money, um, and so we're gonna have to start monitoring that, so please don't put anything in your recycle bins, it's not recyclable. Um, you know, refer to the flyer, and it's, I believe it's on the village website as well, and we'll also send out another flyer, but we need to, we need to make sure that we do that, because they're gonna start hitting us with fines and stuff that, and that costs all of us money, so. Other than that, great report, guys, and we have a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the DPW report as written.
Ed seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous, okay. Fire department? Mel, you got anything to add?
Uh, well, yeah, a couple of things quick. I know Mike is on here, Jay, or Joe isn't, but, uh, publicly want to say thanks and get it in the record for their uh, years of service as Deputy Chief and Assistant Chief accordingly for the two of them. Um, it's a lot of work, a lot of effort, and I certainly appreciate their time and effort in that. Um, the other one is that, um, if you guys are gonna approve the, um, officers tonight, um, there, we're currently, uh, it's kind of in an awkward position, because normally we have two weeks to do this, and we don't have it now as to switch equipment over radios and that kind of thing. Um, so, um, Steve Hayes has already got all of the, uh, his chief's equipment, uh, from the move up from sixty-four to sixty-two. Um, Jay Riley's already got his stuff, uh, as, um, sixty-four, and the one, uh, that doesn't have anything right now is, um, Nick Card, uh, and we're working on getting that squared away. Um, but that probably won't happen for a couple of days, just on how priority fire is at getting these things done, they've got one from Truxton tomorrow. Um, so if they're approved tonight, even though we don't get sworn in, if you will, as a, uh, basically a formality, uh, I'd like to be able to tell those guys that they can go ahead and operate, um, as chiefs, otherwise it's just me and Steve Hayes.
Right, yeah, I have no problem with that. Um, in fact, we can also move that item up, up the agenda, so that you don't have to wait around for us to approve it.
Okay, um, and then, uh, where'd Pat go? I'm trying to look at people. Oh, there he is. Um, the Town of Scott contract, um, I called and left a message today, we've gotten some emails back and forth. Um, and I apologize for not being able to get to the, uh, message machine at the fire station, Tim normally does that, I don't know if I even know the code to get onto it. Um, but I had left a message with the supervisor this morning, but I think it's all come through, they've at least said okay for the next year. Uh, and Dan, there was something on your part of that, I guess, that we had to look at as well. Um, but the contract for the Town of Scott is ready to sign, is that correct?
They just want the one year, or they want all three? I thought, per the language, the email I saw thread, it looked like they were going to accept the entire contract for the three. But the language, the language of ending service at the end of the year, if there's no, um, agreement continuing on, that language is not in the Scott as it is in the Town of Homer and in, uh, the Summerhill contracts, so that's what, that's what I meant about adding that language.
Uh, I think we probably should, Dan, because when I talk to them, and I, I did look back up today, Christina talked to me. Um, I met with them in February twenty-fourth or something like that, uh, and they seemed quite happy to go to a three-year, which is good, because then we don't have to negotiate it again, you know, for that timeframe. Um, but I guess we can confirm that with them, but I got that impression from them that they were happy. Um, you know, service was good, and I explained to them a lot of, a lot of different things, uh, but maybe we can just touch base with them to make sure that that's correct, and if it is, you know, I think the three years is great, uh, that way we don't have to, you know, mess with that one for, you know, obviously three more years. Uh, but I think you're right, Dan, that needs to be confirmed, and, um, honestly, and, and you guys are the ones that, you know, are in charge of the money and all that, but I think we should probably have that, um, terminology in there that if they don't, uh, because I'm not sure that we technically can leave them high and dry, maybe we can. Uh, you guys are no better than that, Dante would know better.
Um, we can't, we can't leave them high and dry, sorry.
What's that, Dan?
We can't leave them high and dry, the, the, the law that they try to, at least the Town of Homer Fire District tried to hang their hat on, does not say that, uh, year of service has to continue, it doesn't say that at all.
Okay, well, I'm just, I, I guess I get it, but I guess I'm not the kind of guy that just says, okay, you know, screw you, we're gonna drop you, and I appreciate that, sure. You know, you're out in the cold, um, because I don't think that bodes very well for us. Uh, and, and if they're paying on the monthly basis, um, with the last year's, um, price, plus whatever we would normally increase that, so that there's a, a little extra to that, but obviously I'll leave that to you guys, but, um, you know, from my standpoint, public safety and where I'm coming from, I, I'd hate to just say, okay, if you, you know, don't have anything, and if they have something with another fire department, okay, but if they don't, and we're trying to work something out to say, well, guess what, you're done December thirty-first, that, you know, whether we've come to an agreement or not, that's
Well, you know, yeah, we're giving them, I mean, we're, we're giving them notice in July that that would be the case. If we can't, if we don't have an agreement hammered out by July thirty-first, we're giving them half a year to find something else.
Right, that, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that one.
Yeah, the, the issue is, all three towns agreed to our price increase in our contracts, and then they, and then two of the three at least completely changed their tune when it came time to, to sign, so we have to be a little more, you know, forceful about this, apparently, I don't, you know, it's, we have no choice, it's not fair to the residents of the village to pay for these other towns.
I, I agree, and you got me for one more year to work on these things and, you know, deal with them and try to make it the right thing. Um, so I guess that's the only things that I've got right now, um, you know, thanks to Mike and Joe, and, uh, the, uh, the one contract, I can get in and sign that, and then if you guys approve the officers, um, that I can have them start operating, so it's not Stephen Iphone wants to get switched over. Anything else of, that anybody had question on it? Thought Tanya said there was another agenda item for us.
Well, just the discussion of the fire contracts.
Okay.
We just discussed.
So we've got the contracts and the officers, those are the only other items?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything else. Um, so, yeah, if we can, we'll, we'll jump forward and grab, uh, Agenda Item J and, uh, approve the elections.
Hal, there's also fire department insurances for group life and accident and health. Um, Malin's seen them, they're just renewal options, so the fire departments are JK and L.
Oh, yes, I see that, fire department insurances.
And we've been back and forth, Tanya and I, about the people, and I think we've got that narrowed down pretty well, so the number is accurate, we're not paying for somebody that's not an active member. So, we've had a couple of, and there's
There isn't large increases or anything from last year, in fact, one of them, since it was, um, providing double coverage.
All right, yes.
Taken out.
Okay.
Right, so there should be a decrease in the overall cost of the insurance.
Well, then, we'll kill, uh, we'll kill four birds with one stone. Uh, let's do the, first, let's do the, uh, officers certification, have a motion to certify the elections.
I'll make a motion to certify the elections.
Okay.
Kevin seconds, any discussion? Thank you again to, uh, to Mike and Jay for their, their service.
I do.
What? You froze.
Be Joe.
Joe, sorry, Joe.
Yes.
Confused Riley boys, anyway, uh, all right, so we have, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. All right, and then, uh, approve the fire department insurance for members.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
Boom.
Uh, thank you for the insurance, I mean, that's a benefit to the folks that, um, it's nice to be able to offer them a little something. Um, and we, we certainly make sure that they're aware of that, and I appreciate that effort that the village is, you know, putting the cost in, putting some insurance on our folks, and hopefully that will keep some of them around, so. Um, I know Mike is on here, I don't know if he's got anything else as far as, uh, uh, fire department goes, um.
I'm all set, Mel, and Nick did call me today, as soon as I can get the speaker and the, uh, the other radio, I'll get it out to him.
Yeah, no problem there, uh, I, priority was tied up today, they got the stuff off from Joe's and onto Jay's, but they've got a trucks and chief to do tomorrow, so they're not, they're not gonna be able to do anything tomorrow.
Yeah, I know, they, I, I gotta get a couple inspections in for, for the street department, yeah, I know, he's kind of busy right now, so.
Okay, all right, yeah, well, I mean, we'll work at that, I'll, I've got to talk to them anyways, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, thanks, Mike.
You bet.
You know.
I'm still around, I haven't gone anyplace.
I'm hoping you're gonna decide you want to drive, so.
Yep.
But I understand, you know, where you're coming from, so it's all good. All right, thank you, gentlemen, unless you need me for anything else, I've got some other stuff, I've got to try to get done.
No, you're, you're excused, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks, everybody, see ya, bye-bye.
All right, let's see here. Okay, Chief Pittman.
Yes, sir.
Anything to, uh, add to your report?
Um, there's been a rash of larceny from vehicles. Uh, some of the municipalities around us, I just want to remind residents to lock their doors to the cars, as well as, uh, it's bicycle season, um, make sure we secure the bicycles, not just leave them on the front lawn, because they will disappear. But other than that, all the officers are, are, uh, in good health, and we're moving along.
Good deal, uh, did you get the, uh, bikes down to the bike shop?
Nope, um, I don't know if they're open or closed or what.
They're open, they're, they got, uh, labeled an essential business.
Okay, I mean, I've called, I called Friday. Um, yeah, Friday, and then Mike Bort, one of my SROs, he called today, or yesterday and today, I think he told me, and no answer, actually, I called yesterday too.
Wow, maybe they're swamped or something, because there was a, they did a Facebook post, and I think there was even an article in the paper about
I thought there was an article in the paper that they were open.
Yeah, so, I don't know if they're just buried or what.
And it could be.
There was an article in the paper, they are open, they're probably just having a lot of people come in right now, this is getting to be their busiest time of the year.
Gotcha, as I said, I thought there was an article in the paper, so.
Yeah, I think they're the only one really nearby that's also open, because the one in Freeville I tried to get comment from, and I couldn't reach them, so they may be literally the only bike place.
Gotcha.
Yeah, without going to Syracuse or Bennington, yeah.
Well, I'd prefer to take it down there, just because they're local and they've
Oh, they're great.
Yeah, so, I'll get it down, even if tomorrow, they're, like, tomorrow, they're closed, I know they're closed, it's a scheduled day tomorrow, and I'll get it down probably Thursday or Friday. Get them down.
Good deal. All right, uh.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the police report as written.
Well, before, before we get that, now, Chief, you had mentioned that there's some folks in here you wanted to thank. Uh, like TLC Ambulance, the Elizabeth Brewster House, Tim, Tim Robidoux, Gary Walter, Nate Rice, and Luke Klein for donating masks, and the Cortland Beer Company, and Beacon Skip Orchard for their donation of hand sanitizer.
Absolutely, when this all started, we were, we had a very limited supply of N ninety-five masks, as well as the hand sanitizer, and they came, they came through for us, and, and I can't thank them enough, uh, it just goes a part of keeping the officers healthy.
And then, uh, the hypodermic needle kiosk is installed and being utilized?
Yep, and, uh, last week, it was, one of the days last week, it was like a, uh, constant flow of traffic, people pulling in and uh, depositing, uh, needles in there, so, I mean, I think that's a good thing for the community, gives us, uh, safely to dispose, dispose of them.
Yeah, and then the, uh, Cortland Communities that cares planning on a fall drug takeback event sometime in September, if everything works out?
Yep, if, uh, hopefully it'll work out for us, last Saturday in September is when we usually have it. Um, obviously, this one in April was canceled, I'll have it ready again at the town hall if everything goes right, um, looking forward to it, I think that's another good thing for the community.
And then the last thing is, I know we discussed, uh, but just put it out there again, that there, we won't have a Memorial Day parade this year, but we will have a ceremony at the cemetery.
Yes, so tomorrow, myself, the mayor, Jim Duan, meeting with Paul Powers with Legion to try to organize it. Um, we've got some pretty good ideas set forth. Um, we're just asking people for the social distancing, we're, we're trying not to get a crowd together. Um, by the, by the entrance there, the, the main entrance to the cemetery, however, uh, we're gonna try to livestream it, as well as I have spoken with the radio station, we'll do a, a live broadcast that day. Um, I think it's, you know, we've got to remember our, uh, our soldiers and our sailors, you know, we just can't let that go.
I agree, I think it'll be, I think it'll be the best that we can do, uh, so, yeah, they'll be able to watch it on YouTube Live or listen to it, hopefully on the radio, if the radio station does it, so. I think it's the best solution we can come up with right now.
Exactly.
Very good. Very good.
Thanks. Good report, Chief.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for reminding me on all those points there.
Do we have a motion? Ed made it. Pat, you want to second that?
I'll, I'll second it.
All right. On the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Very good. Yep, yep. You're all set.
Have a good evening, everyone.
You too. Thanks, Bob. All right, water and sewer. Uh, yep. Did you find that leak, Buzz?
Well, the one on Prospect Street?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Yes, it was a pretty nasty leak. It was a, actually it's a ductile iron pipe there and I actually had a hole, I guess, stick my fist in.
Oh, did it really?
Yep.
You said there was also another one too, right? That you were look, you were trying to chase down.
We got some other, we, where we know they are, we got to get them out there and get them fixed. We got some service leaks. We got, uh. Uh, valves leaks we got to fix. And then everyone starts searching some more, get some of those quiet down. Plus the other one I mentioned there Monday about the, the, uh, country club.
Yeah, we gotta, we have to contact them.
And you know, it's hard to tell. Yeah, you hear the leak is a big, you know, we don't know. It's. Could be just a squirter, but we don't know that. So it's, it has to be quieted down so we can keep looking.
Yeah, we're gonna have to contact them. Um. Did we, did the health department ever certify the tests?
Water quality?
Yeah.
Well, they, they've stretched it up from the fifteenth to the end of the month. So because of the virus things going on.
They gave themselves more time. Okay. Well, that's good. Uh, cause I was going to say we're getting up on that day where I was gonna start harassing them. So.
Well, she did contact me. So.
Okay, good.
She needs some more information and then she'll study that and hopefully we'll get that wrapped up long before the end of the month.
Okay. Excellent. Very good. All right. Any, uh, other questions for Buzz? We have a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the water report as written.
I think, uh, Kevin seconded.
Kevin seconded. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ah, unanimous. Okay. Thanks, Buzz.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Buzz.
Yep.
All right, let's see here. All right, privilege of the floor. All right. Not seeing any. So we move on to, uh, item A. Jared Newcomb, Cuba Street. Jared on?
He is on.
Um, I guess I would, I guess I would ask for some direction from you folks on, on how to proceed. Just given I've had separate conversations with, um, several of you regarding the issue. Not sure, um, if you want me to basically rehash my concern or if you have questions to me, I, I, I don't know exactly where everybody's at.
So, um, I know that, you know, we've talked about this several times on our department head calls and, um. You know, uh, with the codes director and et cetera, et cetera. And it. It seems like it's pretty cut and dry to me. That's, uh, you know, whoever's tree it is, is who's, who's responsible for. Maintaining it and determination was made that it's your tree.
Well, again, here's where, here's where I'm attempting to gain some clarity. The guy that I've had the most recent conversation with, uh, Kevin McMahon, after coming over and taking a look at it, his, his determination was that. It actually sits on our, both of our property lines. So he, this was a conversation on Friday. Kevin did not say that it was exclusively my tree. Uh, he believes after looking at the survey map. My, my contention is different. Um, and again, I, I didn't come up with the survey, right? I didn't place the, the post out there. But I did look at the dimensions on the survey map. The survey map north, south, again, these aren't perfect, forgive me, but. It's like two ninety-one going north to south from the back of my property to the front of the property. And then I think it's like ninety-eight feet and change both ways, but it's rectangular. If you look at where that tree is. And you draw again, what I perceive to be a line, uh, you know, back towards the road, that's going to run into her garage, uh, and her driveway. So. I, again, I didn't, I don't know what we're going to do, um, quarreling about, uh, again, to me, it looks like it's on her property. So I don't know if there's. Kevin's determination is it was on both of our property. But here, here's the other piece though, is I, I've heard different things from, from different people though, like. Um, let's just assume it was on her property. Again, I, I was initially told different things from different people, everything from. Um, that in fact, uh, it would still be, even if, even if the tree originated on her property. Because it's overhanging my property, that then it's still my responsibility. So I, I guess I'm just a little, uh, it's just a little ambiguous to me. What the actual ordinance is. And then as a follow-up, I know how you had said that after I'd explained it to you. That, um, again, depending on the determination about whose property is on, that the, the village was thinking about perhaps creating an ordinance. To address this very issue. So with that, I would, I would look for feedback.
Yeah. So we didn't need to create one because one already existed, uh, and we didn't know that we had it. And Dan found it in a deep dive of our codes. And my issue is Jared, if the determination had been made that it was her tree. You wouldn't be here complaining tonight. And so that's sort of, you know, it seems to me.
What I was told, what, what I was told is even if it is her tree, the fact, again, there's the lack of clarity. Hal, what I was told specifically by Kevin was if it was her tree, it's still not applicable. E- because if it, it's a moot point, whose property it originates on. It, what, what it depends on is upon whose property it's hanging over. He said, according to his interpretation, that I would be cited if anyone was going to be cited. Because it overhangs my property.
What, what is the issue with the tree?
Well, again, did you read the letter that I sent?
I, I, I apologize. I, I did earlier a little bit, but I didn't get to go through the whole thing. And for some reason, my phone won't open it.
Okay, that's fine. I, well, again, so to familiarize yourself with, so I sent pictures, right, of the tree. The, the issue is this, it sits, what I feel on her property about two feet from my fence line. Keep in mind too, folks, that I tried to resolve this both in person well over a year ago, or at least open up a dialogue and a conversation with my neighbor. That fell on deaf ears. Um, about a month ago, I wrote a letter to her, right? Cause face to face didn't work. And I, uh, again, I got no response back either. So that's, oh, then and only then did I try to enlist, you know, the village for some support or at least clarity, right? So the issue is the tree is inching further and further. It's a dead tree and it's at the northwest corner of her property. Uh, again, according to me, I guess, or what it looks like. And it's falling over. It's falling, when, when it goes, it's, it's held up by another big pine. A healthy pine. Uh, again, I believe on her property. I believe Alder's a string of about fifteen pines that overhangs and obstructs my yard. I haven't brought this up before, although that's like a nuisance to me, right? Not a safety hazard. This is. The, it hangs, it's only being held up by, uh, again, two branches on another one of her pines. And again, over time, well over a year ago is compared to now, like I noticed that, um, you know, we don't spend a ton of time out there in the winter. But when the weather broke, like, you know, well, it still hasn't broke, but, um, when we were able to go out and enjoy the backyard a little bit and set up a lacrosse net and things like that. I noticed now it's about six inches from my fence. When that falls, right? A, it's a safety hazard. Um, and again, I, the picture should demonstrate that. Um, my kids, my young kids, right, my seven and eight year old. There's some cross net back there. There's a, um, you know, there's some, uh, raised boxes for the garden. So A, that's going to destroy, that's going to damage my property. And B, I'm going to be the one stuck cleaning up the tree in my yard when it goes. So my, my contention and my reason for, for being here was simply to get some clarity, like. I, I still don't see that. I, I, I guess, if we can't come to a clear conclusion about whose property is, I guess we're going to have some difficulty. But what I was told is, and this didn't make sense to me, even if it was on her property, the fact that it's hanging over my yard. Potentially subjecting me to financial harm and a safety risk to my family, that I'm still responsible for getting it removed. And that just didn't seem. In layman's terms, I have a hard time understanding why that would be the case.
Well, that, that is true, except for one thing. Um, you can't take the tree completely down if it's not on your property. The only thing you're allowed to do is cut the limbs that are overhanging onto your property.
Right. I, I know this is going to be apples to, I, I, from talking to Kevin and you though, but I, I think I understand your position in the ordinance. But what I'm saying is like, that still doesn't seem right. Like you talk about codes. What if something originated on my, what if I wanted to build a tree house or a gymnasium or something? And I built it on my property and then built it over her property, like.
My issue is that because you didn't get the answer that you wanted, you're here to complain about it. If you'd come back and said, yep, the tree's on her property, you wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be hearing about this. So it's not.
No, Hal, again, I'm going to stop you there, right?
He offered to pay for half of the tree removal, right? He offered to pay for half.
Wait, wait, wait. Excuse me? What?
He offered to pay half the cost of removing the tree.
Who was offered to pay half the cost?
Your neighbor. She emailed us and said that she made that offer to you.
But Hal, that's a bold faced lie. I, she never, once again, right? And this is where you seem to. I, I talked to her in person over a year ago and heard no response whatsoever. Then I have a letter. I have a copy of the letter, not a, uh, I took a picture of a copy. That I sent her a month ago. She hasn't responded. That's the whole reason. She's never talked to me word one about this. That, that's why I enlisted the help of the village. So your characterization about me just complaining, even you have said, uh, I've, I've heard different things from you and Kevin about it being a moot point. So to answer your specific, uh, you know, question, she's never said anything about me about paying for the tree, let alone even responded to my inquiries. Both written and verbal. So that's not true.
May I offer a little simple, uh, moment of clarity and just some, uh, cold, hard code as I know it? The board is right. This is under code one thirty-seven dash two nine yards. Uh, the pertinent paragraph simply states, um, and I read this to you, um, Jared. Heavy undergrowth and accumulations of plant growth which are noxious or detrimental to health shall be eliminated. Any trees or portions thereof located on private property and constituting a hazard to persons or property shall be trimmed or removed. That's all it says. Now the determinate, uh, since Kevin is not on the, uh, the, the call. Well, the determination of, from our code officer is that line of trees. It represents the property line. And it's his understanding that down basically the center of all those trees. One half is hers, the other half is yours. Now, per the pictures of where the tree is and where it's fallen and all that other stuff. It's per that understanding of, of the property line, that would be responsibility of the property owner where the tree is falling. Henceforth, that's on your, on your side, Jared. Now.
Phil and Mike also went and looked, right? And you guys determined that the tree was whose tree?
Well, after we saw the, the boundary line thing, I determined it was on this gentleman's side of the. The property stake. So. My determination.
Mike.
Hal, but, but now again, though, I, I, again, I'll back up for just a sec. So you can see by this conversation as it unfolds that I'm not here in fact to complain. I, I, I've heard, again, now I've heard several different things. From members of, again, even on this call. So like, I, I guess I was just looking for a final answer, right? I've tried to go through the proper channels. Um, and, and again, I, I haven't gotten the clarity that I needed. And again, I think people's input, uh, on this phone call. Kind of demonstrates and illustrates my point. Do you disagree?
Uh, no, I do disagree. The code says whoever's tree it is, is responsible for it.
Right. But Hal, again, you're, I, I sort of don't think you answered my question. I, I've heard several different things about it being on my property and about being on both of our property. Again, I, I know Kevin's not here to represent himself, but the gentleman that just spoke says it's on mine. Kevin says it's on both of ours. So. We, we really didn't even have any clarity on that issue. That, that, that was one of the reasons that I requested to be here. Believe me, I have better things to do, um, you know, as well. So your characterization that I'm here to complain is, is, um, is inaccurate. And again, I, I frankly don't appreciate it. Um, as I've just said, I, I think there's a lack of clarity that's been provided by the village about whose responsibility is. Where the tree lies. I hear the code, but the code's only going to apply, uh, if we can make an accurate determination about where it is. Then I heard different things about, even if it was on her property, that it's still my responsibility. So if you guys can give me a clear definition. I'm happy to move on, uh, a clear interpretation of the code. I'm happy to move on. Perhaps I misunderstood you. Um, when, again, Dan was very helpful when I talked with him as well, but I heard different things from him. I know it's not his job necessarily to interpret the code, but, um, I, that was kind of favorable. My letter speaks to that. Um, and what you in fact had said, I guess, not being aware that there was a code that, uh, you know, an ordinance that addressed it, was that you, you would be. Uh, you've heard this complaint before or similar ones, and you were willing to explore the idea of, uh, uh, creating an ordinance. So there's like.
Want to exist, which is perfectly written.
Well, and here's the thing, and here's the thing, Jared, I, I, not that you brought my name up, I'm, I'm definitely going to have to, have to say something. Yeah, I read you that exact same code when we talked. Uh, I saw the pictures, uh, the tree lighting up against your fence. With, with those pictures and with the code that I read, I could only assume that the fence line was your property line. I don't, I don't know. I don't have access to survey maps. It's a private matter between two property owners. So, and that's also the, one of the issues here for the board and for the municipality. The issue is you have two private properties. It's a civil matter. It's not a public matter. The, the municipality is here to help, address things, various things in the codes and everything else that we can do to help. But once a code officer makes a determination and the board recognizes it and agrees with it, then that's the determination. So.
Is this Kevin?
That's, this is Dan, Jared.
Oh, this is Dan. But, but again, so if, if we're there, then I'll thank everybody for their time. But again, I don't think what you're, like I said, I think that's an unfair characterization of complaining. I just gave you numerous examples.
Options. You can do what you like. And if you want us to cite you for it, we can cite you for it and then make you take it down. Or you can do whatever it is you want to do. But that's, that's where we're at.
All right, I gotta, I'd like to call, hold on. This is, this is Pat, Jared, just so you know. And I'd like to chime in here because I've had to deal with trees before. One of the things that's missing from the pictures is the survey. And. One thing, this is, and Dante, please chime in on this, but like you said, this is a, uh, seems to be a civil matter between you and your, your, your neighbor. And they have to determine who owns those trees. And without looking at a site survey though, uh, Phil and Mike seems to have done so. You need to establish that first. Who, you know, and that's a civil, that, that's not up to us to decide, I don't think, unless. Uh, that's up to you between you and your neighbor and that's a civil action. Is that correct, Dante?
Pat, Pat, I'm not going to chime in here. This, this isn't really a productive kind of conversation. All and it's not appropriate for me to, to comment at, at this point.
All right. But it just seems that you and your neighbor need to establish the property line. Now, I've had to resurvey mine because I have the same problem with trees. Uh, the property line running straight down through the middle of the trees. And I've had to work with a neighbor on that. And I've been fortunate in that he has worked with me on it. Once you establish whether or not those trees go right through your property line or not, or if they're all yours, if they're all yours, they're all yours. And, uh, but a surveyor can help you establish that because it's difficult to get a straight line if a tree runs right in the middle of it. Second, as I think, and was, we're trying to clarify things, if it overhangs your property, you can take it. You just, uh, the only downside to it is if you kill a tree because you prune it back because it overhangs your airspace, so to speak. Your property line is that invisible line that goes straight up. So any branch that occurs, crosses over, that's, that's yours. Now, if you kill the tree, then there's an issue. But seeing as these trees are already dead, I don't think that's a problem. Does that help clarify things for you?
Well, well, it does. I, I guess it would make it a moot point if in fact it's on her property or mine or a combination thereof. Cause what you're saying the way it's written, that if it's, if it overhangs my property, it's my responsibility, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So again, I, so the idea was that's really all I wanted was, uh, again, the powers that be to get together. I, again, I, I just gave folks many examples of many different interpretations and many different things about, uh, again, you know, um. To, to try to resolve the issue. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm not here to complain. I, I was really here and if you read the letter, Hal, it was to gain clarity. On, on just that issue. And now I think you've provided it. So I'm not really concerned with what property it lies on. I, I guess you're saying that's my responsibility. So with that, I want to reiterate two things. Number one, Beth has never approached me about, about, she's not said anything to me about this. So why she would represent to the village that she would be willing to pay half? I mean, that's a bold faced outright lie. And secondly, I do appreciate, uh, all of your time, uh, in putting me on the agenda and, uh, and hearing the issue.
Thanks, Jared.
Hope this helps.
Have a good night, folks.
You too. All right, next up, uh, approve PSOB statement.
Okay. This statement would be filled.
Okay, this statement would be filled out by any of the police officers and any of the fire department personnel in case, um, they die. And their beneficiaries would be entitled to, um, benefits and they wouldn't have to go through all the hoops that we have to for the Bushes family.
Very good. I think that's a no-brainer. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the PSOB statement.
Tim seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Add opening, open encumbrances.
So what happens every year is all the open encumbrances from the end of the year have to, the budget has to come over to this year. Cause we don't receive them, and that's all that is, it's a normal standard in every government every year.
Yep. Do we have a motion? Tim?
I think Tim did.
Kevin, or, uh, Ed, second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. All right. Approve Daniel Zuck to zoning board.
I'd like to make the motion.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. That should bring both of our boards up to full strength again.
Yep, although I do think we could look into adding alternatives at some point, but we'll discuss that another day.
I just wanna say I've known Dan pretty much since fifth grade, excellent choice.
I know his mother, so apples don't fall far from the tree, so.
That's correct.
He's probably pretty awesome, and I, if he stood in front of me, I wouldn't recognize him.
Despite his, despite his association with you, Tim, we think he's still a good guy.
Well, there, Tim.
All right, uh, next up is the notice proceed.
All right. Resolution authorizing the notice to proceed for the Village of Homer Cemetery Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Whereas the Village of Homer, Village is the owner of the Village of Homer Cemetery Sewer Improvements Project, project. And whereas Martin Laguizzi DPC B and O has been retained by the village to prepare contract documents for the proposed project to assist the village with bidding the project in accordance with the general municipal law, to assist the village with construction administration and construction observation. And whereas Green Mountain Pipeline Services LLC has submitted the lowest bid for contract number one A of the project. And whereas the village board has awarded the project to, to Green Mountain Pipeline Services LLC. And whereas the village board acknowledges the contract has been signed and executed. Now therefore be resolved that the village board of the Village of Homer does hereby authorize the issuance of the notice proceed to Green Mountain Pipeline Services LLC for contract number one A of the Village of Homer Cemetery Sewer Rehabilitation Project. And be it further resolved, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Let's get this sewer project going. We have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Head motions.
I'll second. I think Kevin beat me to it, though.
Either way.
Kevin got it, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, good deal, all right.
Do we have any idea when they might start with that?
Yes. Yes, uh, probably end of May, beginning of June.
Nice.
And Taylor and Jacklin are on the call if they'd like to chime in too.
Uh, Dan, I think you said it there, uh, Green Mountain is, is, um, looking to get started towards the end of May. Uh, they actually gave us some middles, uh, today with anticipation of this notice proceed. Um, their manhole rehabilitation crew is actually working in Seneca Falls right now and should be wrapping up, uh, within the next couple of weeks, so they'll look to shift towards, um, this project here. We'll look to have a pre-construction meeting, um, hopefully we can get that in next week. Um, and, and we'll, we'll jump right into things. I would just throw out there as a potential suggestion, um, the board might wanna consider, you know, like a, a project board to gaze on. Um, you know, whether that's that Dan or Buzz or a member from the board. Um, you know, they could attend meetings or it's just some, somebody to, to talk to, to, uh, you know, bounce, bust some of the things off as we run into them throughout construction and, and, uh, transfer that information back to the board.
Well, I'd recommend that would be Buzz, cause I know nothing about manholes.
Yeah, I think probably Bu- Buzz and Dan. Cause Dan, you were gonna be a part of it anyway, right?
Yeah, Buzz and I were already gonna be there, just wanted, if you guys wanted to have a board member or two, that's all.
Unless, uh, we have somebody that's got extra time and wants to get into those manholes. Anybody going once, twice?
Yeah, they may be required to go down the hole, I think, I think that's part of the, the deal.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
I think we need somebody small then, so.
Who that is?
All right.
One last thing I, I just wanna add, um, the bid that we did receive from Green Mountain, uh, that did come in, um, you know, very low, which is great. Uh, it does leave us with ample contingency budget. Um, I'm sure we'll use up some of that, um, you know, throughout construction, but we'll probably look to see if we could identify, you know, additional things to add to the project. You know, of course, that will be for board consideration. Um, just remember, we have a twenty-five percent, uh, grant and zero percent loan. So any work that we add is, is, uh, you know, pennies on the dollar, if you will.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. I'm sure we'll find quite a bit of stuff to add, so. Good deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, waiting patiently, Rich Cunningham. Do you wanna chime in about the, uh, the bids?
Sure, um. We, and you kind of a spreadsheet of the summary of the estimates that came in.
He did.
Um, and, and just to confirm that, you know, this isn't, wasn't a formal RFP bid process. It was, you know, uh, based on your procurement policy, you know, uh, you know, getting multiple quotes. Um, what I think would be the easiest thing is to, to separate them out. Again, we did, um, concurrently, we got quotes for the environmental phase one and phase two work for the, uh, properties to be acquired along Route Eleven, um, as well as, uh, property line survey work. So it's probably easy to just do those two kind of separately. Um, you know, just to confirm, and we asked, some people did propose both, but we were clear that, um, we were not going to, um, give any preference to someone who proposed doing both sides of that. Um, you know, for, for a number of reasons. Um, so for the survey work, and interrupt me if anybody has any questions. For the survey work, you actually got in, um, six different proposals. Um, uh, about four of those were from minority women-owned businesses. Um, uh, one was not, and one was an MWBE business that was subbing it out to someone who is not. So, um, but, uh, you know, basically, um, you know, the, uh, lowest bid was, uh, Stockton Surveying for twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty. Um, in the notes that you may have, it says unclear proposal includes local locating site improvements. Uh, we did confirm that they, that does.
Okay.
I reached out to him, so, you know, all of these are, uh, you know, pretty much apples-to-apples comparison, you know, site boundary lines, um, you know, locating, uh, site improvements, parking lots, buildings, um, you know, significant trees, that sort of stuff, so.
Yep, that one seems like a no-brainer to me. Um, and then on the, uh, the other?
Yeah, um, for the environmental, we got six proposals in. Um, five of the six were from minority women-owned business enterprises. Um, there are really two proposals that were, um, I guess, let me back up. All of them, uh, seemed to understand the project, seemed to provide the, the general scope of services that was being looked for, qualified to do the work. Um, so there was nothing along those lines that really, um, you'd wanna disqualify someone based on their qualifications or understanding of the project. Um, the phase one prices were all relatively consistent. Um, not surprisingly, the biggest price differences came in the phase two because, you know, it's easy to give a price on a phase two when you've done the phase one and you know all of the various issues and things that you may be dealing with. Um, but, um, that said, I think all of them, uh, were, were reasonable. And again, you've got two, um, that were the, the two lowest prices that were somewhat, uh, close. Um, I do wanna correct one thing. Um, uh, and this I discovered based on a closer look at them. My notes say that the proposal from Geologic included six sample, uh, test holes. It's actually fourteen, um, the way it was written, it had six in one place and, um, well, so, um, the number of samples, um, were, you know, originally I thought was a little high, but I'm not an environmental expert, so you've got them sixteen, fifteen, you know, that range. So, um, you know, Geologic's proposal is not proposing anything significantly different than anyone else. Um, the only difference, uh, significant difference, which, you know, you may wanna discuss a little bit, between the two lowest proposals is, um, the one that is slightly higher, um, I couldn't do math in my head, about eight hundred dollars or so, um, opposed an electromagnetic survey that would, um, locate any unknown underground tanks. Um, where the lowest one, uh, in their proposal did not include that. Um, that's really the only significant difference. And I don't know whether the feeling is that that is important, um, enough to do it that way, or whether, you know, any potential underground tanks will be found with the, the test borings and, and the other work.
I have, uh, two questions for you. Uh, one, do you know where, uh, Ravi Engineering is located?
Um, I believe they're out of the Rochester area. Um, let me check.
That's okay. Does it, yep, and then the other is, is there, uh, is there anything that says we really should go with an MWBE here? Or are we free to?
Yeah, I, I checked out when that with our grant rep, um, from the Office of Parks, and, uh, she did reply with an email that I forwarded to Dan. Um, and she basically said, um, no.
Okay.
Let me see if I got it here, I can, I can read, it's not too long. Um, it's, uh, when you're doing construction, it is lowest responsible bidder. Um, when it comes to professional service, services such as surveyors, and selections based on the price availability and ability to provide the product requested in the timeframe requested. Um, so as long as the village can provide evidence that they perform good faith efforts in attempting to employ MWBEs and the selection is based on ratable criteria, then, uh, if goals aren't met, you can request a waiver. So hopefully that answers the question, um, for you.
Uh, well, you know, it is, is, uh, obviously Geologic is a, is a local company located in the village, so.
Correct.
Uh, that would be my strong preference, if that's not gonna be, uh, uh, something that we can't overcome, uh.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe the fact that we got five proposals from MWBEs certainly shows our good faith efforts in reaching out and, um, you know, trying to secure estimates from MWBEs, you know?
Okay.
The bigger concern, if we got five that weren't, it's kinda like, did we even try? So, um, clearly the fact that we got five proposals shows that we certainly tried, so.
Okay.
Now, Rich, on the schedule says you got N A, does that mean that they can start immediately?
It, it just says that their proposal didn't specify a time schedule. You know, some people said, yeah, we can finish this in six weeks or eight weeks, and some just were silent on that. Um, you know, I would assume most can start, I, you know, again, I don't know how this type work falls into any of the, um, you know, construction, you know, work stoppages things that we're currently in. Um, but, um, you know, I would, I would think, I didn't get any indication from any of them that they, you know, there would be a time delay in getting started. You know, that, well, you know, we're backed up and we can't get to this for three or four months, so.
So, um, and we, we should vote on both of these tonight, I assume?
Uh, certainly want to and, and, you know, have that going, so.
So, oh, go ahead.
The other question I just had was back on the survey thing, and I, I saw the one includes corner monuments. Uh, do we need corner monuments for a linear park?
No, all, all surveys are gonna show the meets and bounds, uh, and I'm sure these parcels have been surveyed before, so there's probably stakes already there. I, I don't know why she specifically put that in the notes, um, I couldn't say, but we're gonna get the, the meets and bounds description, um, by any surveyor.
Okay. Thanks, Dante.
Yeah, so, some people made a point of that, and, you know, but, uh, yeah, I don't think that's likely to be a big issue.
So again, also Stockton's local, so it would be, it would be my preference to award it to, uh, Geologic in Stockton, but I've listened to the board on this.
Well, I just like the fact that one of them was gonna subcontract to Stockton anyways.
So you could get an MWBE if you wanted to pay an extra three hundred bucks.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, it doesn't even work that way.
Yeah.
I'm with the mayor.
Any other thoughts? All right.
What about, what about the factor of running into unknown tanks? What problems does that propose?
Um, you mean if they're not identified and you start doing construction?
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure I'm the best person to answer that, it's not great. Um, you know, um, again, you know, your construction will likely not involve, uh, significant levels of deep ground disturbance. You know, I mean, if you're talking linear park, it's, you know, it might be scraping off a few feet off the top or a few inches actually, and, you know, covering up and, you know, maybe some, you know, sidewalks, you know, that sort of thing. Um, so I would assume if you never identify this potential, that you never find them. Um, but if you do dig deeper and you're planting a tree or something, it's possible you find it, and then you'll be responsible for dealing with it. Um, I think the biggest concern, um, is that, you know, if there's a tank there and there's something in it, you have ongoing pollution that's occurring. Um, and if that's not discovered for many years, it's more likely that it'll be a village responsibility as opposed to, um, trying to put that on someone else. Um, but again, you know, Dante or the mayor may have better knowledge of that than I do.
The one thing I'll say that, uh, again, uh, slant this in Geologic is, Geologic's favor is that Forrest is really very familiar with this site, and we had him do some analysis of, uh, some of the nice egg, uh, information before. So I think he has a pretty good grasp of what's going on. Um, and, uh, so I think that's a, a big plus in his favor on this.
I was just considering where we are.
Yo, sure, yeah.
Rich, I, uh, have a question sort of on timing, uh, if you don't mind. Um, I need to get the surveys done prior to closing, but the phase ones and potentially phase twos, that would be just something we need to, um, have prior to securing the grant. Um, obviously, the phase ones are gonna be mostly documents, uh, document review, but there might be a site visit planned. Um, we're allowed to go, uh, to a site, to do a site review, uh, prior to closing, but I just, I didn't know if you had any conversations with them about timing? And what, what is our sort of plan for timing of both of these?
Yeah, not specific, not with any of the proposers. Um, you know, other, other than if they identified their timeframes, um, in their proposals. Um, but, uh, that's something I think, you know, once you've got someone selected, you'd wanna, you know, sit down with them and, and work out the details of, of access and at what point they'll be, um, needing to have their work finished and providing whatever information you need for closings.
Okay, yeah, I assume if we go with Stockton or whoever we go with for a surveyor, he'll be able to probably work relatively quickly. There's sort of been a little slowdown in residential real estate closings anyways, so I assume we'll have, uh, him out there in, in a two or three week timeframe.
They're fast, anytime we've ever called on them for anything, they've, they've really turned stuff around incredibly quickly, so.
Okay, yeah, that's good, that's good to hear. And then as far as the other title work, I just talked to, uh, Stuart Title yesterday. And both, both, we have Harder's, uh, abstract and tax, um, search back, but the other two parcels are still at the courthouse, and it's gonna be at least another week anyways to get Title work back for those two properties, um, anyways.
Okay.
All right.
If that's where we're at, then I'd like to make a motion that, uh, for surveying, that we accept the Stockton surveying for two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And that we accept the, well, do we need to do these individually?
Not necessarily, go ahead.
And then my, my other thing would be that we go with Geologic, uh, for the, the other.
Is that your second, Ed? There's, there's the gang sign.
There's the gang sign.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, very good. Thanks for, hey, Rich, uh, any indication whether or not there's gonna be another round of, uh, micro enterprise grants? Nanamas, very good, thanks for, hey, Rich, uh, any indication whether or not there's gonna be another round of, uh, micro enterprise grants?
Um, my answer is there probably will be at some point, um, the, the community, that's funded through the Community Development Block Grant Program. Uh, which is federal money, um, and that's kind of been allocated, um, the question is when. Um, typically would be part of the summer consi- uh, consolidated funding round, which is typically the end of July, um. I'm assuming that time schedule is not gonna hold, but, um, I don't have any firm information on. When and if the state will be, um, you know, issuing and, uh, doing that consolidated funding round.
Right, uh, we might, uh, I might wanna touch base with you about writing that for us, uh, again, if you'd be willing to.
What, what we're telling everybody, and thanks, uh, would love to work with you on that, um, you know, what I'm telling everybody is getting prepared is always good. You know, if you're prepared, the funding round comes around, you're ready to move forward, um, because, you know, you do wanna have a certain amount of. Uh, you know, uh, projects identified, you know, show the level of need, um, and, uh, you know, what we don't know is if. The state will change any of their rules or regulations based on the current pandemic.
Um, right.
And, and how that may impact things for better for worse, you know, as you know, fifty percent are supposed to go to, uh, new businesses. You know, they could waive that rule and say, no, it's fine, they exist, you know, it's just all existing businesses, um, you know, I'm not sure how much. Um, leeway they have on the state level with some of those rules, um, um, so it's kind of hard to tell if they're gonna change things or not, but. You know, it certainly makes sense to start working on, uh, you know, identifying projects and, and being ready for a round.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I know, it's, uh, it's very popular, and we'd love to, to do it again, and I still say differently, but. You know, I know. All right.
I wanna thank Rich for the maps that he, uh, supplied for the L-RIP, which I turned in.
Thank you.
Very excellent.
Yeah, we still owe you one, I think.
Oh, well, maybe.
But thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you all, have a good night.
You too. All right, the next is to proclaim May twenty second National Poppy Day in the Village of Homer, uh. Donna at the American Legion reached out and asked if we would do this, and of course, we did, um. Dan, you wanna read the, the proclamation?
Well, you've signed it, so I don't know. There's a lot of i's in there, you know, I will, I'll do this.
All right, proclamation for National Poppy Day, May twenty second, twenty twenty. Whereas America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers. Whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle. Whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war. Whereas the red poppy has been designated as the symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt. Through the distribution of the memorial flower, therefore, I, Hal McCabe, Mayor of the Village of Homer, New York. Do hereby proclaim this twenty second day of May, twenty twenty as Poppy Day. And ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day. And with this thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official. Homer, New York, this twenty second day of May.
I make a motion that we accept this proclamation.
And Ed second, very good, all in favor? Okay, next one, uh, approve the Keystone Contract for the design of the salt shed. This one, you guys might have some questions.
Well, I read it, uh, I kinda like it, and I liked the idea with the solar on it. And also the parking for a potential garbage truck or whatever that goes in there, so. I think it makes sense versus, uh, just basic concrete and dirt like they have over at the town hall. Um, I think it would be a better system for us, and it probably should fit within our budget, so I don't have any problem with it.
And I have a strong suspicion that there's gonna be an additional incentive for more, uh, green energy credits. Uh, coming out of the pandemic, in addition to the Bond Act that we're working on passing in the legislature, so. I think that probably it'll get even more beneficial to the village to do this, but it would produce all the energy. Used by that entire facility, uh, through solar as well as generating, uh, revenue. Because it would produce more than we need. So.
That was one of my que- uh, was there going to be, so are we gonna be tied in? To the grid infrastructure so we can sell back the excess energy, but yeah, I, I was just wanting to make sure we weren't dealing with batteries here for storage.
Nope, no, it's not metering, so, yep, so, uh, when we're, when the sun's out, you actually can see the meter rolling the other direction.
Okay, and then the other thing, the other, which we didn't have here, but I'm, I am concerned about the aesthetics. Uh, for our surrounding neighborhood.
Right, I think that, actually, this is, this, well, it would, it's basically gonna be a Morton building. Um, because before it was gonna be a soft top.
Right, like the, uh, like the town has.
This will be more of a Morton building, uh, you know, it'll still have the concrete sides that go up and, and are sloped. So that they can get there and, and shovel the salt, but then at the top of those concrete walls, it'll basically be Morton building above, up and above. So there's structural, uh, you know, support for the solar arrays.
That should actually last longer than, than the, uh.
I would think so, and like I said, or like Ed mentioned, it gives us storage for either. The garbage truck if we move forward with that, or for one of the plow trucks or another, you know, piece of large equipment.
That we always need.
It's multi-using, it makes us money. What else you gonna do?
I'll make a motion that we accept the contract as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, very good, all right, let's see, uh, the next one, the Riparian buffers. I don't, okay, so. I was kinda hoping that she was going to, no, I don't think so. Well, it's pretty good, uh, pretty detailed explanation of what they're gonna do. But if you actually go to either Durkey or, or Newton Waterworks Park, you can see, um, the little pink flags where they, where she's got it laid out. Um, it's really, it's really thoughtful, this is a pretty important thing for protecting the waterways, and it's completely free to us. So we just really just need to accept this, um, and then the DEC will come in and plan all this stuff for us. Make a motion.
Uh, wait, wait, you know, okay.
What, Ed?
Will these plantings get in the way of a potential river trail?
No, the ones here at Durkey are, they're. I, right outside my window, basically, they're, as you come in.
Well, I don't have any problem, long as it won't.
No.
Us from having a trail.
Come in the entrance to Durkey Park, right when you come up to the first sort of picnic area before the little parking spot.
Right.
There's a, sort of a long stretch of shoreline that's empty. So it would just be planting some shrubs and then some trees right along there.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
All right, not a problem then, I'm in.
All right.
I, I see that they're using sugar maples, tulip poplars, uh, shrub silky dogwood, northern bayberry. And because it's the DEC, I'm very confident that they're not using something that they're not supposed to.
That's kind of what I was figuring, I didn't, I didn't wanna go and, you know, analyze each of the species, I assumed that they know what they're doing, so.
Yeah, well, I did.
They're all pretty much native species anyway that they're using, so.
I, I misread one of their things, I, I was not happy, and then I had to reread it, so.
Oh, you thought it was the dreaded Norway maple or something?
The, the silver maple, yeah, I was about right, I was, yeah. They, but they, they were saying that was already there, it's not what they're putting in, so.
Good, all right, so someone made a motion.
I did.
I'll second.
Pat second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, excellent. Fire department, uh, fire contracts, fire life, okay, uh. Tanya, appoint Tanya and Donna to trustees for Edward Jones Investments.
There's more to that, just a second, um, I also have to get EINs for each of the trusts. Um, the IRS is requiring that, this came in today. Um, I've been dealing with a broker so that we actually can, um, do everything with the trust. Um, at that point, then, any motions can be done by the board, but the IRS requires them to have a separate EIN. Different from the village.
So we need to wait?
No, we need to approve, like, the trustees and doing EIN.
Oh, all right, that's fine.
Which trustees are we having be part of?
These are the Earl Abbey and the Barber Trust, um, and some compliance issues just came up with. At Jones on how they don't have separate EIN, which is why the IRS will require backup withholdings on any interest. If we don't create the EINs, they're free, it's just, it has to be separate from the village and different. Name and one in the Barber's name.
Tanya and Donna will be the trustees, it has no, uh, board, uh, work for the board or trustees, it's just, that, that's just the name of the, uh, what they have to be for Earl Abbey.
Yeah, and then, um, there was talk where we ha- are looking at doing work at the Earl Abbey, and we'll be able to do that also.
Oh, good, good. Okay, do we have a motion to do all of that?
Ed made the motion, Tim seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, all right, next, uh, approve the banner purchased by the HBA for the Homer Senior Graduates. No brainer.
I'll make the motion that we approve.
Kevin seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous, uh, approve Shaniqua Perry, her internship for the Climate Smart Certification, so she's. Finishing her semester now, and then she's gonna be working part-time for the village to get us all certified, uh, and through the whole Climate Smart. Uh, community pro- program that she actually was one of the people that got us started on, so, uh, I think this is a great idea.
I do too, I'll make a motion.
Ed motion?
I'll second.
Pat second, all in favor?
Will she be, uh, she'll be reporting to, uh, Dan?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
God.
Aye.
Unanimous, okay, uh, let's see, and then discuss the country cup water leak we lost Buzz, uh. They are not fixing it, um, at some point, we're gonna have to send them a notice that we're gonna turn their water off if they don't fix it. Basically, I don't know what you guys' thoughts are on that, but it's their responsibility and, you know. Uh, um, you know, they can't stall us forever.
Where's the leak?
The leak is somewhere between the road and, and the meter, so it's, it's their, it's their responsibility to fix it. Um, but, you know, as long as they're not fixing it, water's just leaking out that village residents are paying for.
Have they made any effort at all, Hal?
No.
Are you gonna send them a nasty letter or anything?
We're gonna have to send them a nasty letter, I do, just to say, look, you know, you guys are gonna have to address this issue, or we're gonna turn your water off.
I'm okay with that, I'm okay with it.
I think the sooner the better, because it's gonna take a while to fix or discover, so the sooner we start the process, it doesn't mean we have to fix it immediately.
All right.
I mean, it's, it's, it's very clearly their, their problem if it's, um, in the location Hal said, I mean, we don't have any responsibility, um, after the road, so.
I think their problem is that it's almost underneath their front steps.
Yeah.
Yeah, but still their, their issue.
And we do have a responsibility or the, the right to turn it off if they fail to comply, correct?
Yeah, oh yeah, I mean, that's costing every resident of the Village of Homer money.
Yeah.
So, and we don't know how much, because we can't, it's not, uh, we can't get in there and, and, and figure out what, how much is leaking, so.
Yeah, cuz that sewer and water.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, so I make the motion that you do it.
Okay, all right, we'll do it.
Kevin seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous, all right, we'll send the letter, uh, budget adjustment for Grigsfield netting support. This is for the stuff that got purchased, uh, that we're just gonna hold on to until it's time to put it up.
It's only a couple grand, so it's, we're gonna need it anyhow, so.
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
It's actually only four hundred and forty-three dollar.
I was thinking it's, yeah, you had me worried there for a second, Ed.
Oh, I just pulled it out.
Oh, Ted motion, Ed second, all in favor?
Aye.
Real, real quick, guys, uh, just so you know, um, in my talk with them today. Uh, they are actively still trying to salvage having a season, and they're looking to try to do it in July, so.
All right, so, well, we, we can revisit that in July, I just said through the end of June, it wasn't, wasn't gonna be able to happen, but.
Yeah.
We'll see where we're at.
I just wanted to let you know, that's, that's their thoughts.
Yeah, hey.
Thanks, Tim.
Keep hope alive. Never know, uh, very good, and then, um, I guess we can cut loose, uh, Phil and. Uh, Mike, who have been really patient, thanks, guys, we, we, we have to keep you guys on till the end, cuz, you know, questions come up. Always that we have to rely on you guys for, but you don't have to.
It's all good, you guys, have a good night.
Yeah, have a good night.
Thanks, Mike, thanks, Phil.
Yeah, thanks, great job, guys.
Uh, all right, next, uh, Dante, do you have anything for us?
Um, no, just briefly, I, um, I think Harder's contract called for him to provide us with a survey, and I, I think there is one in his title documents. I'm gonna look tomorrow, cuz I have to go in the office, so that might save us probably about a third of that cost.
Excellent.
Of these surveys. The IDA took that out of their contract, and I think Fran did as well, um, so we'll have to cover those too, but.
Crafty.
Uh, I'll, I'll let, uh, Rich know tomorrow, so we can finalize that.
Excellent, anything else?
No, nothing else for me.
Beautiful, all right, let's go around the horn, starting with Kevin, got anything?
Want to get back to work.
Yeah, I know, I know, well, phase one, phase one Friday, so, we're moving, uh.
Doesn't include me.
No, I know, I know, uh, Tim.
Uh, just on that topic, exactly, uh, is there anything we're gonna have to institute? Uh, as far as guidelines for businesses to reopen and do things?
That's a great question, and nobody knows the answer to these, uh, there are ones I raised, uh, Paul Hyder called me today, and I, we talked, and I. Kind of rattled off my questions, um, and he didn't really know. I don't think anybody really, I don't think anybody all the way up the state chain right now knows, and so it's gonna be something we're all gonna have to figure out together, so. I basically committed to him that we would help do whatever we had to do here, you know, in the village to. Get things going again, uh, the best that we could, you know, make sure it's safe, but to get things going.
At one level or another, though, the, the health department's gonna have to be involved.
The health department, yeah, they are, they are, the, one of the big issues, though, is, uh, there are a lot of, there's about. Chamber thinks there's about eleven hundred businesses in the county, and so that's a lot of plans to review. You know, that's, there's a lot of questions, but, uh, yeah, so hopefully, uh, things will go forward. I did see a notice that they had an out, the bagel shop. Had, uh.
The person was wearing a mask, but tested positive.
I didn't read the article, dude, when did they get tested, do you know?
Supposedly, I believe it was a few days ago, no?
And they said Fridays when they, yeah, if you were in there, he says everybody had masks on, so.
Hey, and I believe he was tested after, or he or she was tested after that.
Cuz I, uh, cuz I was in there on Thursday, I think. So I'm gonna get tested, uh, either tomorrow or the next day.
Uh, somewhere re- nearby here just opened up, uh, testing for anyone.
Yeah, I have to look, I, I think.
Think off the top of my head who it was now, but, uh, it's somebody in our local area that opened up testing to anyone.
All right, I'll have to look, cuz, yeah, I. They've gotta make it a little easier, but, um, all right. Uh, Ed, what you got?
Three things. Uh, loan program. We didn't talk about it at the Economic Development, L R I P D R I Committee Meeting last night. Just saying.
Right.
Okay by a means.
And I'll be sending you a whole bunch of stuff from B L D C tomorrow. They actually did the loan program already. So we're gonna kinda cheat and look at theirs.
Oh, I like it.
Well, I'll be forwarding that tomorrow. I just had to finish some other stuff and then I've already got the paperwork. I just have to finish downloading and then I'll send it to you.
Yeah, cuz I thought we were gonna have like a, a committee, not us, kinda go through you know, the rules, regs and determine and blah, blah, blah. Anyhow, I just wanted to know. Okay, that's good. Uh, second thing is, uh, I completed the survey for the L R I P that go on into the water bill. Uh, Victor is reviewing it and smoothing it out a little bit. My wife thought it was pretty good. She's biased. Uh, she hates my stuff normally, but anyhow, it worked out. And the D R I is, uh, we're working on that, so, well. I think we're doing pretty good here for the community if we can pull up any of these things to get our trail, dog park, development. You know, we're primed. I, I am so excited about all you guys that we work with and the opportunities that we could have to make this place just awesome.
We got a lot, yeah, we got a lot going on. Uh, Pat?
Uh, I just wanted to emphasize for everybody, so the first quarter, our sales, the sales tax was up by fourteen thousand, ten percent. But April is down and we're already down statewide by, was it twenty, twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent.
So, you know, great start, but then uh, COVID came in, so, or we're still gonna have to, I think we're gonna have to keep a tighter look at our budget monthly uh, instead of quarterly. Um, with that, I attended the Homer Town Board Meeting on May sixth. And I just had a question, you know, so they got ninety-two percent of their taxes collected through April. Do we know, Tanya, and I hate to put you on the spot about this, uh, if you don't know, that's fine. Do you know where we're sitting?
In a couple of minutes, I can give it to you. I actually have the numbers.
Oh, and then, uh, so while you're doing that, I'll go on. The, uh, I know the Homer High School's looking to do a parade, so I, I think we discussed this before, just so everybody's aware of that and that, uh, the Fire Department and Police Department are looking to assist, so once we find out more about that, I think it'd be good if we can put that out. That's all I have.
That's a great idea.
Alrighty, um, with that, I make a motion that we go in, or I would entertain a motion to go into executive session, contract negotiations, um, personnel matters and real estate to discuss.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Unanimous.